But there were lots of people, the restaurants, BMAX.
So she was kind of going.
I mean.
Yeah.
He closed down or what? I went over there to get something to eat.
Oh, BMAX?
Yeah. I went over there about four and it was closed.
Yeah, they don't open back up until 4:30 or 5:00.
Good work on that, I didn't expect it.
Yeah, they usually, they close at two.
I did, indeed.
Kind of take a break.
Mrs. Burd Treacher. Ms. Burd Treacher.
Yeah, they always, they always do that.
One more minute.
And there, but they were, they were swamped and they carried over to Saturday.
I recommend. All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone tonight. Appreciate you coming a little early. We've got quite a bit of business tonight, so we'll get at it. We will start with the invocation and Dr. Bosch, if you'd like to lead us, please.
Dear Father, thank you so much for this wonderful creation that you've made and we thank you especially for the city of Lakes here and for all the great work that this city is doing with all the various departments and branches of this fine city. And so I just want to pray for all of the work that everyone does, that you would give wisdom to this group assembled here in front of us and help them to continue to govern well. And we pray for prosperity in this city and for safety and just for a wonderful place to live and work and play. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you, Dr. Bosch, appreciate it. Before we consider the approval of the minutes, I just wanted to point a couple of things out. First is more of a general, as you'll see tonight, previous, old and new business. We've been doing a lot of these voluntary annexations. And I know it gets a little confusing and Jeremy will, as we go through tonight, kind of reiterate this, but essentially there's four things that happen with a voluntary annexation. The first is just simply a petition for annexation that doesn't require a vote. We'll actually see one of these tonight, I think, the Williams annexation. The second thing after those annexations, after the petition has been acknowledged by the council, then the council votes on the fiscal plan resolution, which obviously just requires a single vote, but that is, that is a requisite for the annexation process. And you'll notice that tonight, think on the Mitchell Mesmore annexation. The third, it was a little confusing and I may have Jeremy jump in here, but the public hearing for the annexation ordinance will also occur tonight, also the Mitchell Mesmore annexation, but by statute, the council is not allowed to approve or even take action on the ordinance, on the annexation ordinance until 14 days after the, the public hearing has occurred. So it seems a little confusing. Normally when we have a public hearing, we then take a vote on first reading, but that's now how annexation, voluntary annexation works. And then the final would be the actual consideration of the annexation, which would, is going to happen tonight for the True Hotel. Again, that is a vote and that is the annexation ordinance vote. So again, there's a petition to annex, there's a fiscal plan resolution, there's a public hearing with no vote, and then there's a consideration of the annexation with the voting. And you'll see that has occurred and certainly in the minutes, as we go through the minutes, and then you'll see some of the old business here will include that. Actually, the new business tonight, we'll, we'll get into a lot of that. So Jeremy will clarify each step if you have any confusion about that. The second thing I wanted to point out is that the, the minutes did reflect correctly the disposition of the transfer ordinance, did pass on first reading by majority vote, but the state statute is very clear that in order to consider an ordinance on the same day for a second time, it requires a supermajority or two-thirds. And although there was a majority, there was not a supermajority, so that failed and will be considered tonight on second reading. So with that, I will take any questions on the minutes from the last, from the July 17th meeting. Seventeenth here. But it was the 16th. There's a, I guess there's a correction on the first line.
First time.
It says Monday, July 17th, 2017. Should be July 16th, 2018. All right, anybody else?
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
With the correction?
With one correction.
Is there a second? Sidney, second?
Yes.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, thank you.
Also, I will note that Councilmember Fresh is absent.
Is absent, yes, thank you. All righty. Welcome to all our visitors tonight. Appreciate your coming and we'll get to you as soon as we can. All right, Lynn, you put in the franchise fee report from MediaCom. Any comments on that?
Fifty dollars higher than it was last year at this thing for you, so.
All right.
Pete Ward.
Any questions regards to that? Okay. So let's move into unfinished business. Again, we'll consider on second reading ordinance 2018-07-01. It's a transfer ordinance, funds for the Buffalo Street Engineering. Again, as previously mentioned, it just requires now tonight, since it's a separate date, it just simply requires a simple majority and it did pass seven to zero on the first reading. So with that, are there any questions on the ordinance, on the transfer ordinance?
I would move to approve ordinance 2018-07-01.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hi, Jerry. Okay. Item number two is a second reading on an additional appropriation for Motor Vehicle Highway Fund. Again, as an additional appropriation, the second reading also requires just a simple majority. We had our public hearing and first vote and it passed unanimously at the last meeting. So are there any, any questions regarding ordinance 2018-07-03?
I move we pass that ordinance.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, thank you. So we'll move into new business. Our first item of business is a resolution 2018-08-01. And this might seem a little confusing. The first thing we'll consider is the resolution for the fiscal plan and then we'll move into the public hearing portion of, of the ordinance. Jeremy?
Yeah, so you have before you the fiscal plan for the Mitch, Mitchell Mesmore annexation. There's not a whole lot to say about it because there are no residents or businesses. Currently, the, it's farmland land. So in terms of an impact on us or cost of service, there'll be very little. It's already in the fire territory, so the fire territory already services the area, but there's really no buildings or residents to service. In terms of the street or road improvements, there will be some additional costs in road improvements as we will be taking in some additional roadway mileage and that's in that fiscal plan. If you look at the back section, it gives you a breakdown of costs and material for street and police. And those are just estimates based on material supplies, roads per, per mile, linear mile, and then fuel repairs and maintenance costs per linear mile, mile for police to service that additional, additional area. Currently, in terms of tax increase, it'll be very minor, but as the properties develop, obviously it'll be a zone for residential, which would allow for future subdivisions within the area that would generate additional taxes as they develop out. In terms of a tax impact on the surrounding taxing agencies, because there are very little residential, the impacts are pretty minor and that table's laid out as well for you. Just be section four of the fiscal impact. Is there any questions on the, on the fiscal plan?
Jeremy, are the petitioners here tonight? Questions? Again, this is pretty much undeveloped ground just north of Bel Augusta addition. So I think Jeremy has done a pretty good job of explaining the minimal impact on the budget at this point. Obviously, we hope that develops and we're able to enjoy the benefits of, of the increased assessed valuation, so. Questions? All right, well, does anybody have a motion to approve resolution 2018-08-01?
So made.
Okay, is there a second?
A second there.
All right, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, thank you. Then Jeremy has presented the annexation ordinance to you. It's primarily a legal description, but it, it also just talks about the, basically the nuts and bolts of, of annexation. Jeremy, anything to add on that ordinance before we?
Yeah, the most important thing is actually on the last page, it's bullet point two, three, and four. It really tells you what, what the impact or, or what the changes will be for the land in terms of how it represents city and it'll be zoned R1. It'll be located in Council District Two, which is Shoemaker's Council District, and it would take effect September 19th, assuming that it gets adopted at the next meeting and we do the advertisement in the paper.
And again, we will not take action on this tonight. You'll have an opportunity to review the ordinance. In the meantime, though, we'll open this up to the public to see if there are any supporters or, or those in opposition to this annexation. So hearing any further comments from the council, I will go ahead and open the public meeting and first of all, ask if there's anyone here that wishes to support the petition for annexation. Anyone wishing to support the petition for annexation? Okay, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the petition for annexation or the ordinance, actually? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, hearing none, I will close the, the public hearing and back to the council. Again, we could not approve this tonight. Jeremy, is that correct? Would you give the council their instructions on if they have any options tonight or it's just a matter of waiting till?
The code is, is kind of vague. It just basically says that you have a public hearing on the ordinance and then you, you can adopt the ordinance 14 days after the public hearing. Doesn't really say what you do during this public hearing tonight. So I, I mean, it's really up to you. I would say you vote on it at the next, this is the introduction of the ordinance, it's the public hearing portion, and then you vote to adopt it at the next meeting.
Right.
Based on what the statute says.
Do you concur based on the statute?
I do.
Okay, so at the next meeting, we'll consider the annexation ordinance and if it's approved, it'll take effect. Again, this is all part of the voluntary annexation statute.
And it takes effect 30 days after the public notification, so after the public hearing, we adopt the ordinance and then I put an advertisement in the paper and then it takes effect 30 days after that. So that's the 19th date, so I'll have the advertisement ready to go in the paper once it's adopted and that starts the, the 30-day timeframe.
Okay. All right, so we'll move on to ordinance 2018-08-01. This would be actually what we just talked about, this would actually be the approval of this voluntary annexation for the True Hotel by Hilton. The public hearing and approval of that annexation fiscal plan occurred at the last meeting, so tonight would be the, your chance to, to discuss the ordinance and take action on that. Jeremy, anything to add on that?
Just that this is similar to what I just said, that two, three, and four are the most relevant to you, will be annexed in as commercial as the joining adjacent property or commercial. It'll be located in Council District One and will take effect September 5th after the publication within the Times Union.
Questions? All right, is there a motion to consider ordinance 2018-08-01?
I'll make a motion when you approve ordinance 2018-08-01.
I'll second that.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, thank you. Now, item number three is another petition for voluntary annexation. Again, this one, if you remember previously, these petitions are just certainly you acknowledging that you've received their petition as it is presented to you. There's no action required. The next meeting then we'll consider the fiscal plan and have the public hearing for the, for the ordinance. Jeremy, any comments on this?
You'll see the legal description. I've also included a map, so you could actually understand what the legal description is, but it is out by the airport, south of 350 North, east of Airport Road. There's a track of land just north of what's currently developed residential that they want to be annexed in for future residential development.
Jeremy, can you tell us where the city boundaries are around this property?
It's, it is that airport, so the airport's all in, everything else is out.
And the Dells is not?
Okay.
The Dells, yeah, are not in the city limits. This will start that process that we just went through, so you'll have, we'll prepare the fiscal plan, we'll advertise for a public hearing, then after the public hearing, we'll have the adoption of the ordinance. Same process. And there'll, there'll be at least one other annexation that we're working on, so this won't be the last one.
Jeremy, too?
Looking at the map, so the area that we're annexing is the shaded area?
Yes, yep.
And then the area between that and, and the red line, that's, that's?
Yeah, the red line is the current city boundaries.
Okay, so Deerwood and Ashford, those are not, would not be in the city limits, right?
That's correct, they're not being annexed in.
So it's kind of like down?
It's simply the, the currently vacant ag field. It's not developed, undeveloped ag field, so it's currently being farmed.
All right, Jeremy, thank you. I know there's been a flurry of annexations and I think we've talked before about that. Those have to be completed by the end of the year due to the census being next year and they will not allow us to do annexations after the first of this year, 2019, so. All right, any questions on any of those? Understand the process and again, these are all voluntary, they're pretty straightforward. Obviously, our Airport Industrial Park is an involuntary annexation, which required a very different approach. I believe today was the last day for remonstrance, so we'll be considering that soon, so. All right. All right, budget time, let's start. Jeff Beeler will call you to the podium to present your 2019 Public Works Budget. All right, take care.
His, his street department budget number is half eight.
Could you say that again, Lynn?
Half eight for the street department budget. You're welcome.
Double O eight.
Proceed.
For personal services, we had about a 7% increase for this year. Some of that increase is to the fact we're going to be hopefully adding two additional employees to the street department. We, this year at this point, until the additional annexation tonight, we were adding 11.9 miles and it seems to continue to grow, which was about at that point in time, a 12 and a half percent increase in road mileage to maintain. And it appears that it's going to be getting better, so that's a good thing. We're still growing. But with that growth, we need people to help take care of it and for the services that we provide, so that is part of the increase that's in here for personal services.
Jeff, bring a microphone up.
You can lift it up a little bit higher.
Thank you.
You can point it towards you a little bit.
Would you like to hold it for me?
You can do that, too. There you go.
All right.
If you would like to dance or stand.
You'll vote for it, we'll go there. Page one, page two. Supplies is pretty much zero all the way across the board. Held the line on this for this year. Any questions? Page three, other services and charges, had some changes in this section. The asphalt management program reduced $50,000 in that section because we already purchased that this year, that is being put in place. It's sort of been held up by the server that's being taken care of as soon as that's online. Hopefully, we'll be able to get that program rolling. We did have an increase in our debt services for this year for the radios that were purchased for all the departments. This will be, we have two more years worth of payments left and that's the $32,000, $337 in debt services. In other services and charges, you'll see an increase of 26%. A little bit of that is a recycling contract will be up for bid this year, so we took the highest bid that came in last time and used that as our base number, hoping to be able to come in then under that number for recycling contract. And our landfill is going to be, we'll have an increase, one, just from the rates and two, from our annexations that we've taken in. We've added, I think there's 38 homes in Shadow Lakes, there's about 12 homes around Biomet and then other various homes that are coming in. The South additions, Park and Pheasant Ridge are filling in down south. Every day, there's new homes going in as well as Bel Augusta, I think that's 78 homes potentially total, and they're building those out as well, so we're having to plan and prepare for that. Total increase in that budget of 6.7%. Last is capital outlays, machinery and equipment, $365,000 last year, $417,000 this year, 14% increase. It includes two single axle plow trucks, they're coming in about $195,000 each, and two lawn mowers that we'll be trading in, and then a spray unit for anti-icing during the winter, which this year, we've been using those units also to do some watering with some projects that we've had going on, which has been nice. Be able to use those during the summer as well, so.
Can you talk just a little bit more about the plow trucks?
Plow trucks, it is going to be the exact same thing that we bought our last time. It's a Freightliner chassis, these came through Waterworks, these, the first two, and we're going to get two more like it hopefully next year. The chassis, when we bought that two and a half years ago, it came in $165,000. This is the exact same chassis two and a half years later and we're at $195,000. There's no difference, other than cost. So this is kind of where we're at. The equipment that we're purchasing now compared to what we used to have, we were not able to control salt usage at all before. They were applying rates of upwards of 1,200 pounds per lane mile. This past year, our average application rate was around 250 pounds per lane mile and it was a pretty good layer. That is helped by the fact we're doing anti-icing as well, so we are having large reductions in our salt usage for winter maintenance, which is a huge cost for us since it's usually four to five months a year. But this equipment has new technology that helps us to be able to accomplish those things. So there's a greater cost in the equipment we used to have. Most of the trucks we used to see, they'd only plow and then there's a totally different set of trucks that would drive around behind those plow trucks and apply salt. The equipment we have now, they both plow and salt at the same time and apply liquids, so it's kind of reducing the number of trucks out to be able to accomplish the same job, so.
So how many trucks will we have altogether, then?
We will have 12 units that will be able to plow and salt.
Okay, and the, the two from last year and the two from this year will be, all the parts will be interchangeable and stuff as far as maintenance and things like that?
Yes, they're going to be the exact same, hopefully, chassis. And snow equipment. The electronics in plow trucks is almost like cell phones. I mean, electronics in anything, they change very quickly. The controls we have now are electric over hydraulic controls and so what we were able to get two and a half years ago is now outdated, so that will change. The brain is sort of the same, just all the hardware's different, but we try to keep it as close as we can.
Jeff, are you, have you integrated the new radios yet into, into your, your everyday use?
Our radio, the last radio got installed Saturday in the garbage trucks and so we are hoping to go live tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay.
If all goes well, they have to come in and do a transition period. We are still running on analog and we will go hopefully to digital tomorrow.
What frequency did you change to?
I have no idea.
It's 800 or something?
We are not on 800, that's only for the fire and police. We can have access to that if an emergency disaster were to occur, but we have our own separate channel as ways, as well as wastewater.
If you guys remember, when we talked about this and approved this, the idea was to get a band so that the city, the departments could communicate together and that's, that's the purpose for non-emergency personnel of having these radios. And that was more than evident in our training exercise when there was a chemical spill that, that we had to not only respond, police and emergency, but also street department. So, yeah, that's, that's the purpose of, of those radios. They've just gone to a digital and that allows them to utilize that frequency, so. I know some of you have had a chance to talk to Jeff about his budget, I don't know if others have questions. Obviously, we've got time before this budget is adopted. We'll be considering two departments today and then we'll move into the non-for-profits, but this is just a start. I think Jennifer, I would ask if you would come up, I know there was, at the beginning of Jeff's budget, there was a discussion of salary increase and if you would just explain how the, the budgets were put together with, with your salary committee and the instructions that you gave the department heads. And this will be applicable to all the departments, so I thought we'd start it out so that you understand the, and again, any of those that have been on the wage committee, I think Jeff and Diane can, can chime in as, as this discussion is happening. You might pull that microphone.
Right, so. Can anybody hear me now? Okay, so what we, we asked the department heads to do is to take their 2018 wage category and increase it by 4% and put it into a pot of money, if you will. 2%, we know that we would like to use it for a cost of living adjustment that is imperative so that we don't get behind again in our wage scales. We've worked very hard to bring those wages back up the last several years. 2% is going to be perhaps used for the continued alignment in any positions that we need to really look at or departments and just kind of look at the overall increases for, are they doing a good job or recommendations from other department heads as well, okay?
And we got that figure by going to the Social Security Administration and looking to see what they consider the cost of living in that to be for 2018.
Correct.
How's that alignment going?
I'm very happy with it. We worked hard. We've, as everybody knows, I know it's a broken record, but we had to kind of stop what we were doing because of the economy back in two thousand and seven, eight, nine, and then trying to catch our breath up until this point. But about the last three years, we've really been bringing up those positions that we really needed to, and it's been helping. We're still lagging on certain ones, very hard to fill certain positions, and those are the ones that we need to continue looking at.
We're also keeping a very close watch on the local wages as the low unemployment rate has made it a little bit more difficult to hire, and there has been wage inflation, obviously, in the community as a result of that. So having the ability to do that, if we start fighting that our wages are behind, that's all part of the process. It's an ongoing process.
It is.
So we're looking at four percent across the board?
We are looking at four percent that we added to the budget as a line item, just for a starting point. Unfortunately, the way that we build our budgets, same thing with the medical insurance, it's just a wild guess until we get those absolute numbers in, so we needed to put something in the, so she could advertise them.
So as we get towards the end of the year and we get better numbers, we'll probably end up cutting a little bit as we go, Jim, right?
That's a very good possibility. As you know, yeah, as you know, there's so many different things that kind of affect that, yeah, it just doesn't.
We talked today, we know that our insurance rates will be going up this year. They'll be higher than they were last year. We don't have the final number then, but, you know, obviously, that's going to add to what the employee will have to pay as far as their contribution. So we'll have to sit tight and wait and see how those come back.
Just like in years past, we did what the trust recommended that we do. We billed it for fifteen percent, hoping that we come in even at single digits or maybe right at the very, very low double digit. We've never hit a double digit, I think, for several, several years. So, you know, we're just, we're hanging on, but we'll see. That will be a line cut. Back to you, line one.
And I think the important thing to note is that we're not, across the board, increasing every wage four percent, okay? The department heads have some leeway within their specific positions, within how things are performed within those positions. We started off with that base with the social security index of the two percent and then a fluctuating amount. Some jobs at this point are already at the very top of their category, and so to increase a job like that by four percent would not make sense because they are already at the max of what, like, people are earning in that same position. Some positions still have room to grow. So I think it's important, when you look at salaries, to remember that with the figure that you're seeing is the most that it could possibly be and not what it actually is yet. So as you're hearing about budgets and when you hear the Wage Committee report, to remember that this is the top that it could go to, but it does not necessarily mean that that is what that position and that person would be earning at that time. So that's a little complicated, but I think it's important for everybody to keep that in mind.
And when will we know those figures?
Do, I'm sorry?
When will we know the exact figures?
For the wages? As soon as we get through budgets and you look at the numbers and where we need to be coming in at, and we've.
Probably September, October?
We, probably. Well, we have to have the salary ordinance adopted by November first, so we're going to get a lot of our information that we need from the trust, from renewals for insurance, work comp, liability, just a lot of things that actually affect everything. And that comes in mid-September, so you'll get that either at that draft, just, hey, can you look this over, the salary ordinances, the first meeting, or in second, the second meeting in September, and then we'll run them the whole month of October.
So you should have time, our plan is that they would be presented to you and then, with no action needed, kind of like.
Correct.
An annexation ordinance, and then that you would have at least two meetings following that to vote or, you know, have concerns or share things, so.
And you have to remember that our salary ordinance currently includes what the employee contribution is for our insurance, medical insurance and our other benefits, and until we get those numbers from the trust.
Sure.
We can't run anything. I mean, we're kind of backwards, sideways.
So as you hear department budgets tonight, then, and they've added that amount in, then you'll just keep in mind that it's not going to go any higher than that, and in most cases will be lower than that, because we have very few people that are at the very top of their range, so.
Right, right. So the salary ordinance just has a certain number, and that's the maximum somebody can make, does not mean that people are going to make it. Normally, somebody who's been here thirty years, they're probably at the max. They're setting that bar, but the new ones coming in are coming in, you know, thirty, thirty-five percent under, so.
Right, thank you. And that applies to all the budgets that you'll be hearing, well, one more tonight, and then next meeting. Jeff, you want to go through your other budgets, MVH, LRS?
Absolutely.
MVH is tab two oh one. That's where we have a highway. We did additional appropriation for tonight. But that's for this year.
For MVH, for next year, we have a fifty-four percent increase overall. Operating supplies, twenty-three percent increase. Road salt and anti-icing liquids is usually what that goes to. Salt prices are going up. I think they went up from eighteen dollars a ton from last year. This goes up and down, up and down every year. Never know exactly where you're going to end up. Repair and maintenance supplies generally goes all towards hot mix, asphalt, repair of roads, up a hundred and forty-four percent from one seventy to four fifteen, and that's work that we provide in-house. Reason that number is higher is we're actually doing some paving on our own from a machine that we borrowed from the county, their old one, and that's kind of exciting and fun, and we're saving money and learning, and so it's been a good experience, I think, for the city, for us to be able to get involved in that part of maintenance as well. Other supplies stayed the same, a total of five hundred and sixty thousand. Other services and charges, repairs and maintenance, this gets into what others perform for us, is up to a million forty. That includes repaired maintenance of roadways, paint striping, the wheel tax repairs and maintenance money comes out of that, and there is two hundred thousand in to replace traffic signal heads, poles, control boxes, streetlights, signs at intersection, hopefully to, to kind of help explain a little bit of that. As you'd seen maybe in Border Works, we found out that our traffic signals are much older than anticipated. We believe from the information that we found that they are the same poles and lights that were here when State Road Thirty ran through Warsaw. So they're well past their time, and so that went from a just replace poles and metro vehicles for years to a complete gut job. So the cost went up for intersection, but it will also give us the latest and greatest technology to be able to control our signals, which right now we really don't. Every day at twelve oh one, it turns green, and twelve oh two, it turns red. This is the way they're set, and so in the future, we'll be able to control those, which will tie in with the NDOT project that's coming through town, I believe in two thousand and twenty or two thousand and twenty-one, to replace all the traffic signals on State Road Fifteen, which will also be able to communicate with the railroad signals. So hopefully, our timing and everyone else's timing will match up at a good time, and traffic flow will hopefully be able to be improved through downtown. Most of this increase came from the one percent gas tax that we received last year. It came in, and we didn't know exactly where those figures were going to come in, and they're coming in good, and so that's a great thing. So that's why you'll be able to see a large increase in this budget, as well as the next one, which is LRS. A hundred percent of our MVH and LRS budgets go to roadways or roadway maintenance and to nothing else.
Just as you reminded, those funds also, the wheel tax, the local wheel tax goes into that MVH budget as well. Questions?
Jeff, how many employees you currently run with right now?
We have slotted for thirty-three. We have thirty-one at the moment.
Just a comment, I continue to hear good things from the other departments about all of the help that you and your workers give to them.
Thank you. Last budget, LRS?
It's tab two oh two.
We were at a hundred and twenty-five last year, up to two hundred this year, sixty percent increase, and the same reason why, money's coming in, so we're going to spend it. Do the best we can while we have.
I think I talked a little bit about when I asked for the additional appropriation for the rest of this year, that we want this money sitting in a balance somewhere. We want to get it out and put it in the roads, and appropriated, got additional appropriation for this year. How much was it, Jeff, another three hundred thousand? And then this budget, looking at the balances that were in there, we need to get this money in the road, in the roads for repairs and maintenance, and anything else that needs to be done. And I know Jeff's guys are working really hard, obviously, to identify those roads that we now have money for. He's looking at the appropriate way to spend this money, be it microsealing, crack sealing, mill and fill, even reconstruction, and we're continually evaluating, you know, those projects. And that money doesn't even address the Market Street project that will be coming up, hopefully starting this year. I think you might have heard from the Border Works meeting that we got our bids and potentially that work will start this year. So I think we're doing a very good job with the funds that we've got, and we're leveraging those funds with federal available funds and trying to maintain what we can, and do a lot of the work ourselves, and to continue to really utilize the funds that the legislature approved for us the last session to really give us, two sessions ago, to increase our ability to catch up. Again, I thank you for the hard work you do, Jeff, because I know it's a lot of work to be done. Any questions on any of those three budgets?
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Jeff. Okay, so we'll now move to the two thousand and nineteen not-for-profit requests. Oh, Jennifer, you almost got lucky.
Like, woo, don't have to be here.
As long as she showed up, she ought to do it right.
No, mine's going to be really nice for everybody. My budget actually is a reduction from two thousand and eighteen. Prior to line one cuts in two thousand and eighteen, and then after. Prior to is a reduction of about twenty-five thousand, and then after is still about five thousand, reduction from eighteen to nineteen. If you go category by category, there is a reduction in salaries and wages. Our full-time janitor is part-time, and then we contract out with a cleaning individual to come in and vacuum and sweep, do the trash and things, and we were able to kind of job share, and then also reduce our insurance. So that's the huge reduction from eighteen to nineteen. But with that being said, as reduction in wages, then we have to pay the individual that's going to come in and help us clean, or is cleaning, and so that was, a little bit was extra in our personal services in thirty-one categories.
Follow on that? Okay. Questions? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, now I would ask you to go to the fifth tab, and you can flip back to the notes. Gives you a little bit of history on the non-for-profit council contract requests. I apologize, the second page that showed the two thousand and eighteen numbers unfortunately got printed on the second page, so you may have to flip back and forth, and I'd probably jot down those non-for-profits next to each number there. Apologize about that, but that information probably will also be presented here as far as what the two thousand and eighteen funding was. So.
Before we.
Go ahead.
Before we start with the not-for-profits, we have been doing some investigating as far as government roles and not-for-profits, and I forwarded to you all an email that came from Indiana's Associated Cities and Towns. As we make decisions about not-for-profits, one of the things that has come up around the state is the fact that while we have a contract with each of you, you know, you get paid, I sign them, and you get paid quarterly, I believe.
It depends, people, the circumstances are.
But one thing that we need to make sure as we're listening to not-for-profits is that the role of government in supporting not-for-profits is that they provide a service for the citizens. So taxpayers' monies are to be used for services that are provided to citizens, not necessarily general operating funds, and no need to panic this year. You all have, you all provide services, but as we get ready for next year's budget, we're going to be forming a task force, and we're going to be looking at making it clear as to how you should present things so that you're aware of when you present to us, what kind of service are you providing for the citizens of Warsaw that we, as a city, are not providing in another way. So some of you, that's really clear and easy for you to spell out, and for some of you, we may need to meet with you and help you spell that out so that we make sure that we're abiding by that. We need to, what we want to do is to avoid the appearance that the city council is choosing your private charities for your tax monies to go to. That's not the role of city government. The role of city government is to provide services for the citizens, and so as we work with our not-for-profits, we're looking for those kinds of services that you provide that makes this place a better place to live, work, and play, and gives people things that they would not otherwise have access to for us. So we are going to definitely be more clear, and if you hear us asking some questions along this line, I don't want it to throw you, because we've all been thinking about this this year, and the Department of Local Government Finance that actually reviews our budgets and, you know, approves or disapproves them, are getting a little bit more nitpicky as far as looking at how cities and towns are spending their money and making sure that they are, you know, doing those for services. So I just wanted to let you guys know that tonight. We're excited about hearing your requests, and we hope that next year we can produce a more definitive outline so that you naturally would answer those questions and those things would fall within your presentation. I didn't want you to get thrown off, but we asked you a couple weird questions tonight. That's where those are coming from, so.
And I would just echo that. I think when this task force gets together, it's a good time to gather the information. I think it's important to find out what these funds are specifically going to be used for, and then also really kind of dig into the budgets and what would make the two thousand and nineteen budget require an increase, if you will. So, again, those are things I'd ask you to look at. Cities and towns handle requests for contractual services with not-for-profits in very different ways, and I think the council has come to me and asked that we, after this budget cycle, we take a look at how we will take these requests in the future. Again, it's something that I think we're very fortunate, we live in a community that can support, are very essential services that a lot of our partners provide, and, you know, we're not threatening that, but we just, we need to have a means of making their job a little bit easier to make those decisions. There's a lot of requests, and in these difficult economic times, you know, those requests are becoming more numerous, and the amounts are continually to escalate, and as Diane said, we have to be responsible to our taxpayers. So, so that being said, we will have the Animal Welfare League as first. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. We'd ask you to approach the microphone, give your name, and.
Oh, hi. My little assistant came up, too. My name is Katie Wilkes-Zeman. I am the new executive director of the Animal Welfare League. This is my daughter Cecilia Zeman, and she is one of many of the young.
this is my daughter Cecilia Zeman, and she is one of many of the young volunteers that we have in our shelter. She came along with me for a myriad of reasons, but obviously if she came up here today, she's enthusiastic about animals like I am. We are in our current facility that is located off of US 30, that is just behind the Lake City Motors. In our care currently, we have over 300 dogs and cats, a majority of those are housed within that shelter, but a lot of those animals are also out with foster parents, whether they're taking care of them because of medical needs, or simply because they are just too young, and they need to take their time to be able to grow in a healthy manner. And so they're with our temporary fosters until they're ready to be spayed and neutered, and then brought out for adoption. So we're really currently very, very full, we're in a process right now where we're trying to increase the adoption rate through reduction of costs, we're also creating a program called Clear the Cages, where we can partner with area businesses, because we're at a full capacity in our shelter, but we want to be able to continue to serve the citizens. When an animal comes to us, we first and foremost try to identify the owner as quickly as possible. When we've covered all of those animals, we do our assessments for injury, any type of illness, those are treated, any type of behavior issues, we try to treat those as they are in our shelter. We get them all up to date on their vaccinations, and then we also spay and neuter, because none of the animals that leave our shelter go without our spay or neuter, that allows us to help control the pet population in the community. While they're also with us, we also help with socialization, and so our animals are utilized in various programs, such as going out to the nursing homes and acting as pet therapy. We have groups like Cardinal Services and other group homes that actually bring residents to us, they can interact with the animals, and that allows our animals social time as well. So we have some of those programs going on right now, and it's been very successful. It's really helped our animals, as well as helped the community. Another program that we are just now getting back into is we're working with organizations such as the Beaman Home, where men and women who are in their shelter who have pets, they can reside at our facility with no charge while they're working to get back on their feet. So we have animals such as Gizmo that came to us, and Gizmo has been more than well-loved while in our shelter, we're gonna have a hard time saying goodbye to Gizmo in a couple weeks. So, we have a lot of those programs, we also do educational outreach, but we're really limited on the facility that we're in, it's a current, currently it's a 7,000 square-foot facility, it was never designed for animal care, but our staff has done a phenomenal job at working within it, we're currently at zero illness at full capacity, which speaks highly to the individuals that we have partnering with us and employed by us with the organization. We are breaking ground at the end of the month on our new facility, that is going to be a 13,000 square-foot facility, it's going to have five separate containment areas to help control any type of contamination. The one thing that the board has realized over the last five years at doing this planning for this building is that animal shelters are very difficult to plan for. So we've done it right, we've partnered with the Robinson Construction and various other organizations, we are going to retain the building that's currently on the facility, we're gonna utilize their garage, and then hopefully turn the front area into some sort of secondary retail space for any type of businesses that would be good partners with us. But then we're building a brand-new facility right next to it in that area, and that's located just across US 30 on South 100 East, I want to say, or West, or, you know, it's just right across the tracks. So it's easy to find us, the big red barn, and some of the programs that we're going to start implementing once we move into that new facility is first and foremost a low-cost spay and neuter. Currently, the city of Warsaw and Cosiasko County does not have a low-cost spay and neuter for our citizens, so that's one of the programs that we're going to start, so that way, those of our citizens that do have pets currently in their care that have not been spayed or neutered, we can go ahead and provide that service for them at low cost. Another service we're providing is that for all of our in-house animals, we currently have a partnership with the Underground Hound, it's a wonderful grooming facility, we are able to bring all of the animals that come to us in a very horrible, dirty state, we can get them completely cleaned up, take them to their facility, and they do it for free. What they're doing now is they're going to be working with us on a fundraiser to create an in-house grooming salon, they're gonna train our own employees to help clean up the animals, and then they'll also come in for some of the harder cases on a regular basis, so they'll be doing it in-house. That's just one of many programs that we're developing. The third one is a catch-and-release. If you've not already heard, we are, Warsaw, city of Warsaw as well as Cosiasko County is in an overpopulation state with the cats, there are quite a few feral cats out there, everybody sees them, everybody wants to save them, but quite a few of them are very much happy in their wild state, they would be miserable in a home. And so what we can do for the county, as well as for the city, is to do a catch-and-release program, where those animals are caught, brought to us, we get to do a spay or neuter, and then once they're healed, we can, and get them up on vaccinations, once they're healed, we send them back out into the wild, where they can live happily ever after in their own way, but without overpopulation. Because we're trying to counteract it right now, but right now it's just a big Band-Aid, and it's not doing anything, because the cats are gonna do what the cats are gonna do. So, as long as we can help, could we long-term control that population, you're gonna see a great reduction in that, you're gonna see a great reduction in feral cats that cause a huge amount of problems once, as well as some sort of illness epidemics once they grow. We work with amazing group of volunteers that come in, they come in and cuddle the cats, they come in and walk the dogs, they clean the cages, they volunteer for events, and we do it at all ages, I know my daughter gets to come in most Saturdays, and she gets to come in and snuggle with the kitty cats, and then we have senior citizens, we have one Kevin who comes in every single day and does that, and so we're providing a service that way, we're can, you know, pets are very soothing, they're very helpful, they're very healthy, they really provide a good environment for individuals, lower blood pressure, I mean, there's proven studies. But on the flip side of that, we have some animals that come into our care that are desperate for our care, but they're desperate to find their perfect owners. One example is Boris, Boris came to us October 2017, he had been with us for quite a long time. Boris did not show well in the cage, meaning if you got him out of the kennel, he was great, inside the kennel, he was a little curmudgeon. Well, an individual came in that was looking for companion animal to help with his PTSD after serving in the military, and he and Boris connected just like that. So Boris was sitting there waiting for a long time, but Boris finally found his perfect animal, or animal, four-legged friend, excuse me. And then you have animals like Kenzie that come to us with mangled legs, and we partner with veterinarians that are able to take care of major medical needs for free, and so Kenzie's now a tripod, Kenzie is now part of our family permanently, unfortunately, we are very much a medical foster fail, which happens quite frequently. So, I don't know if I could really say much more about it, other than this brand-new facility that's coming up, it's gonna have an indoor dog run, it's 13,000 square feet, it has all the cages that we could dream about, it's really gonna be prepared to take care of the needs of the city of Warsaw for decades to come.
Question, how much did we give them last year? 20,000 last year, and they're asking for 22 this year. In 2017, we gave them 19,000.
It is, it's a steady increase that we are asking for, but it's to counteract all the programming costs that we are adding in, once the new facility is built and ready.
I didn't get a chance to ask you, but I've asked the other director, have you applied to United Way at all for any help?
We have applied many years in the past, now that United Way is under new management or new executive director, I think we're gonna have a really successful partnership there. And that's something that we are pursuing this year.
So you're gonna use the funds, I think you just said, as programming for the new facility?
The funds that are gonna be, it's gonna be used not only to take care of the animals that are in-house, but that also is inclusive to the programming, which is taking our animals out for therapy, housing animals that are coming in from the shelters that need care. So it's going directly into the animals that eventually will benefit the citizens of Warsaw.
And the new facility will be 13,000 square feet in addition to...
The garage, yes, we're not including the garage space simply because it's gonna be utilized to house any of the vehicles, as well as lawn mowing equipment that we have. We wanted a separate space for that, we did not want to risk any type of contamination, even just that little bit from the garage, we just weren't gonna risk it, and it was much better to keep the current facility on site, since it's already been purchased and it's paid for, so there's no overhead involved in that particular facility. And then we build a brand-new facility that is completely animal-centric.
Is that new facility in Warsaw?
I see, and that's the thing that's really crazy, because right across the creek from us is Warsaw, and, but we're considered first in Indiana is our address, so I believe our move is going to move us directly into Warsaw, Indiana.
Mailing address?
Hmm?
The mailing address.
The mailing, oh yeah, the mailing address has always been Warsaw, correct?
But you're not in the city, right?
We are right next to the city, but the new facility will move straight in. No, you're welcome, I know, it's confusing, I apologize, but yes, we do have a Warsaw P.O. box.
One comment I had, we send out a, I think it's a two-page application, and it kind of gives a summary, that then all the support material is attached to. Page two gives the revenue, we asked for like a three-year history of revenue, all the revenue, and then also the required attachments are down at the bottom. I didn't see that, although I know a lot of the information was contained in your financials, and so, I know something that we've talked about is potentially improving this application, so I would just ask, and again, I found the information, the revenue information was in there.
Yes.
But I didn't see page two unless it was somewhere else, and I looked a couple times. Anyway, it's not a big deal.
Okay, okay.
But I want council to be aware of that, because I know that this was approved several years ago to try and put everybody at least on the same par as far as the different organizations and what their revenue histories were, where they were coming from. So, at any rate, I think that's just a small point of...
Well, we've been, we've been without a treasurer on the Board of Directors for at least a year now, we just secured Trevor Ross as our treasurer, he is coming on board, and he and I are going to hit that budget like gangbusters. I'm incredibly excited, because I'm a little geeky when it comes to those kind of numbers, and as, as great as the financial management has been for the organization, I want to make it more transparent to our citizens exactly how the money is getting distributed, as well as what kind of income is coming in. And Trevor and I are gonna work on that, so you're gonna see a whole different kind of budget for 2019.
I'd ask if you find that page two, if not, I'm sure I'll...
And I know I filled it out, because I remember trying to come up with the 2019 numbers, but yeah, so if I will, I'd be happy to get that, yeah.
Alright.
Okay, thanks so much, I really appreciate it.
Any more questions? Mike?
Could you just briefly tell me what your relationship is with Warsaw Police Department and their animal control officer?
Of course, because we have Tug and Jerry, Tug and Jerry are responsible for not only the city of Warsaw, but also all of Cosiasko County, and what they do is if a citizen calls in, whether it is an animal that is loose, or it's a situation where it could be a hoarding situation, where there's several animals at once in one home that are in health crisis and need to be removed, Tug and Jerry will move into that situation, they will secure those animals and then bring them to our facility. They have 24-hour access to that facility, so even if we're closed, they have access to the building, and then we always keep kennels available for them to be able to transport those animals. They fill out paperwork for us, so when we come in in the morning, we see them, we know who brought them in.
Do you know about how many animals City might send out to you?
Oh gosh, I mean, it changes, I mean, last Sunday and last Monday, we received five, five dogs one day, five dogs another day.
That's a good resource.
Yes, oh goodness gracious, we wouldn't be anywhere without them.
Alright, that's a good question, Mike, thank you. Anybody else? Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Alright.
Officer Curtis is a city of Warsaw employee, Jerry Clayce is a county employee, they do share responsibilities, so Clayce goes on vacation, Curtis will move in vice versa, they do cover maybe the larger ones, cows running in the road, whatever. I believe the county owns their current building now, and they rent it for a dollar a year, so.
Thanks, Jennifer. Alright, I don't see Carl, is there somebody here from the CCAC? Rick?
Rick.
Very good. CCAC's asking for 31,000, they were given 25,000 last year, so, Rick?
My name is Rick Pachakowski, first of all, I'm here for Carl, he was unable to make it, called me at the last minute. I'm gonna do the best I can as to what you're looking for. I became treasurer beginning of 2017, and what we did at that point in time, we had a committee of four people that worked on the budget, and then had the board approve the budget. Before that, it was strictly the treasurer and the president. In my mind, you need more people involved, so they understand what is happening, what you're gonna be putting together, you want those people to take a look at the expenses, and, as well as the revenue, but the expensing side is so very important, so many people forget about, okay, revenue's coming down, let's say we have bad weather, and we missed a tourney. Well, some tourneys that we had in July, I mean, they're huge, we had the World Series of baseball for 10, 11, and 13-year-olds, and that was 60 different teams, we had 64 teams for the girls' fast pitch, and if we would've lost those weekends, we would've lost a huge amount of revenue, because you don't just get the revenue that it costs for them to get in, you have concessions, you have entry fees for the, just getting into the park, we charge, so, there's a lot more involved than just, okay, we're gonna have this many tourneys, we're gonna have this many during the week, the men's, the coeds, the women teams, but what happens if you don't have that? What happens if you lose one of these leagues completely? So, this group of four now, on a quarterly basis, we're taking a look and saying, okay, revenue has stabilized, so we're fine with the expenses. This quarter, maybe we lost a tourney, what did you do to reduce expenses? So, with this group, we're able to maintain revenue and expenses, so that people understand you can't just keep spending money without knowing the revenue is definitely gonna be there. Now, last year, the main focus that I was involved with was negotiating the track of land to be able to get CCAC, rather, because Donley's was, has split up, and at any time, they could've just came and said, okay, we're gonna take our land back, we would've lost all that. We were able to get that, we were able to purchase that land, and now we're moving forward, and what I told the group is, okay, in two to three years, what I wanna see is for us to be able to be at a break-even, or possibly break-even at the worst case, even make a little bit of money without any funding whatsoever. So if we get some funding, it's gonna be for specific buildings that we may need, right now, we're taking a look, October through February timeframe is not a good time for us for revenue. So we're saying, okay, if we could have a little indoor for pickleball, tumbling, and cornhole, that'd be something that we haven't had before. Now, you may laugh, you say, okay, tumbling, we made $15,000 last winter on tumbling, and these are little kids. They're able to do it inside, where it's warm, pickleball, people are constantly coming to us and saying, you know, get a quote, let's see what it's gonna cost to have an indoor pickleball, and we're saying, you know, that's something that we can look at, we're not committing to anything, though. Right now, we've got pickleball that they can use indoor, if the tumbling is not, you know, people aren't using the tumbling, because we make more money on the tumbling. But, you've got thousands of citizens here that utilize this facility. Without this facility, where would they... this facility. Without this facility, where would they go? You know, it's more than just playing and having fun with sports or whatever. It's great exercise as well. It's healthy. I mean, there's a lot of benefits to this. I'm trying to take this a little different than what you may hear from Carl, because I think it's important. I think you need to understand that the number of people that we have coming in and out of this facility, every time you drive by, you're going to see it full. Soccer on the weekends with the little kids, you've got softball going year-round practically. Now, I mean, they even play in the winter at times unless it snows. It's great exercise, it's health, it's, there's everything involved in this. And what we want to do now is, this October through February timeframe, try to come up with more ideas of what we can do indoors, find out how large a facility we may need to put up, and say, okay, now, instead of you giving us the money for funding for operations, we're going to be able to start asking and coming in here for a specific, okay, we need this type of facility, this is what we want to put in it for the wintertime, so that people, both old and young, can play and utilize it during the wintertime. We don't have places to go like that. You have the why, sure, but the why is filled up all the time also. So, what I'm asking for is, I want to thank you for your past support, but to at least maintain where we're at for one more or maybe two more years, so that we can get our footing and find out how we can make this not a lot of profit, but at least, like I said, at the worst-case break-even, so that when we need something, we can come in only for the facility that we need, or a specific program that we see that is going to help individuals out. Questions, please?
Okay, just a quick point of clarification on page two, that you had listed $26,000 as the city's contribution this year, and that's $25,000, so.
It was supposed to be the same from, what, 26?
It's, no, it says 26 on here. Our contract for 2018 is for $25,000.
$25?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, small.
No, no.
I appreciate your thoughts about trying to do some things in the winter, because I think as a council, we had perhaps talked about that before in previous presentations. One question I have, and just because I do go out and watch nieces and nephews, kids and everything, play soccer. Do you ever charge for parking out there?
On the tourneys that we have on the weekends, we charge for parking. We do not charge for people that, you know, play around the year, soccer, softball, that come from Warsaw or, you know, in the county. They pay only entry fees, so they don't pay parking fees. But tourney fees, we have individuals at the front entrance, and they have to pay to come in.
When did that start?
Oh, that's, that's been, well, since I've been here with three years now, so it's been before that, though. And it's strictly for the tourneys, though.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Any else? All right, Rick, good job. Pinch hitting.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Pam, Warsaw Housing Authority, followed by Housing Opportunities of Warsaw. While she's coming to the podium, the Housing Authority requesting $5,000 less than last year. We received $35,000 in 2018. Housing Opportunities requesting the same $7,000 that they received last year.
Well, I have big news tonight. The Goshen Housing Authority has dissolved, and all those vouchers are now the City of Warsaw. Eight years.
Yay!
So that's done. We, we have been funded, the Warsaw Housing Authority has been funded since its inception 40-some years ago by the City of Warsaw. And it was to grow a small agency and keep it going, so the service was here for rental assistance. And so, the money does go directly to the clients, as you talked about. So, in the last 10 months, 307 families have applied for rental assistance. 222 were called in for briefings and to see if they qualified for a voucher. Out of the 222, 99 qualified and were given vouchers. And currently, there are 17 families looking for housing. I would say our most difficult thing this year is kind of like the employment, there's also no rentals. So, it's very hard for people to find a place to rent. So, they might have their voucher for 90 to 120 days and not find a place to rent. Currently, there are 36 families from Warsaw on the waitlist. So, we continually keep giving out the vouchers in hopes they'll hit a unit here or there, and then if their voucher expires, a lot of times, they reapply. The average that we had on the program was 167 every month so far this year, and we were allotted up to 175, so that's a 96% program usage. There's 302 people that are currently on the program within those households. I broke it down, we have 24% of the families on the program are elderly, 36% are disabled, 69% are female head of households, and we have 14% that are Hispanic. The average income of these families is $13,457, and they pay an average of their rent and utilities of $317 a month, and the housing assistance payment average is $356 per family per month. A new thing that has come out, and this is where the city funding comes in, because I have to make my budgets almost a year before they happen, and then the federal government doesn't make their budget until seven months into my year budget. So, it's just a big guessing game. And so, when things come up and things change, that's always my cushion to make sure that we continue to maintain and keep going. So, for instance, a new rule that just came out was, it used to be you could be issued a voucher here. After you lived here a year, if you wanted to port anywhere else in the United States with that voucher, they could take that voucher with them and go somewhere else. Now, the new rule is, as soon as we issue the voucher, they may take it anywhere in the United States. So, what, what would happen here is, we would spend five to six hours with a family, do all the paperwork, do all the verifications, do all the mailings, and then they would just leave. And we do not get administration money until they lease up. Really bad business plan. We have not implemented that new rule yet, but with the, what the federal government is saying is, for instance, there are no vouchers in Los Angeles, California, available. They have been booked up and solid and not even offered it to new families for at least 10 years. So, somebody could come here and get a voucher and take it straight to Los Angeles. Well, these vouchers were allotted to the City of Warsaw, so eventually you could run out of vouchers if that is really how that kept going. So, we have made rules on our waitlist that you have to already have lived here, you have, or work here, or you do not qualify to get a voucher until all those people get a voucher. So, for instance, we have 46 out-of-county people on our waitlist. They're from all over the United States, but their names don't seem to come up on the waitlist. So, you have to, you have to really study the rules to figure out how they best fit the community that you're working for. The other thing that they've come out with now is, you used to, if you gave, okay, Jeremy, like, you have a tax credit, a developer that wants to come in here and they want to build some apartments, doesn't even have to be a tax credit, it would be any developer, and they want to build a complex of places. It used to be that you could, they would call, the ones that are getting government grants would call and say, can I have some of your vouchers? It gives me points on my grant. And you would say no, because you didn't really want to give up your vouchers, because, remember, if we don't have vouchers, we don't get administration money, so I couldn't afford to give away any of them. But now, having the Goshen ones, and there's new rules that we actually keep that voucher, but it is attached to a rental unit. So, I have advertised, and I got, I have one developer interested, so we can take some of the vouchers and attach them to a unit, so that when it's a time like right now, when they can't find anywhere to rent, they can only rent to people that we qualify and send to them. So, for instance, if, let's say they had 50 units, and 10 of them were project-based, and they sign a contract for 15 years, then, we, every time they have a vacancy, we send them five of the next applicants that have vouchers, and they decide which one they would like to rent to in that unit. So, it gives us some available units, but we don't own public housing. So, we've started that process. And that's about all I have on Warsaw.
Okay, so, any questions on Housing Authority? I know those of you that are involved in the Housing Authority know how owners, these federal regulations are, and they're switching their personnel, their, their structure, the rules and regulations. I know Pam's been through an awful lot the last five years with the Goshen situation, and for those of you that aren't familiar, it didn't sound like much, but that's, that's a huge, huge impact, positive impact for the Housing Authority. So, different story, different time, but I'm certainly recognizing of that. That being said, housing is obviously a critical situation in our community, and I know Pam and her board do a great job, and it sounds like it maybe got a little bit easier with, with that news. But it looks like what you're asking for is $5,000 less than last year, and as you suggested earlier, it's basically operating and maintenance costs, just a cushion, not knowing what that disparity between you and set your budget and when the government sets their rules. You're always going to get a surprise.
One other thing that, that is good to know is, let's think about economies changing. Now that we have Goshen's vouchers, we may rent those vouchers here or in Goshen. So, let's say, let's take this scenario. Let's say that, that we really were thriving here with our businesses, and everybody was employed, and we had less people asking for rental assistance, but the RV business went kaput again like it did that one time. That would mean, out of our 175 vouchers, if we didn't have them used here, those people would have their choice of using them in Goshen, and vice versa. So, I think, not now, but in years to come, that might be a very good thing for both cities.
Questions?
I think one thing that's important, too, having been on the board, is that they do have all their expenses divided out, so she knows exactly how much, and Ron, you can, she knows exactly how much is spent on Warsaw, and your Warsaw money goes to Warsaw's expenses, so you're not subsidizing Goshen, or Marshall County, or Fulton County. And just to make sure that everybody sitting here knows that.
Any else?
Yeah, so you, since we're helping with, we're servicing, I would say, Goshen and some, do we get, do you get money from them as well?
You're not helping service them. Like she said, when I write a check, it has like eight line items on it. It's all divided up. A portion comes from this program, even if I'm paying the rent. A portion comes from this program, a portion comes from that program, hence divided by vouchers in use. So, but to your other question, Goshen had to give money last year. They won't be giving money anymore, I would assume, but.
Did you utilize that federal money, the administrative portion of that, to administer that program?
Yes. Yes. Okay, on to housing opportunities. That's our non-for-profit. We had asked you to help us fund last year the Healthy Homes Program, and we have one more year to finish up this study. To date, we've had 16 IPFW Purdue nursing students work with us on this, this study. They go into the homes, they review the health issues of the family members, and at the same time, they evaluate the home for air quality issues and other housing conditions that could have an effect on the family's health. And we've done over 150, well, about 180 homes now, and 30%, over 30% have come back with radon that was above living levels. And I kind of had an idea this might happen, so your money has been paying for those radon tests. That's one place it has gone. So, it's gone directly into the homes. We have been, we received funding from K-21, and that is paid for the radon mitigation systems. And, and as you do something, there's things you never thought of that you have an impact on with families. I had two different families call this year and requested radon tests, just because they heard little pieces of the Healthy Homes, so we did the Healthy Homes. But both of those families had had someone diagnosed with lung cancer, and radon is the leading cause of lung cancer. And thankfully, neither house did have high radon. But, you know, when you have a family member that goes to the doctor and you find out you have cancer, you go into a real panic mode. Some people have to find out why. So, we're, I realized, we really were someone that went in and comforted the family because they were scared about their home at that point also, not just their treatment they were going to have to have and stuff. So, that was, that was something I really hadn't expected out of this program. The nursing students have been great, but IPFW is now IPFW IU, so I have to wait a couple weeks to see if they're sending students in September. I am now searching for other colleges that may have some nursing students and talking to them, like Grace. But their results were, this is their community part internship of nursing. And the impact on them has been enormous, because they didn't expect to find the things that they found in homes. And we've, this program is also open to all income levels, so we have done as many people that are totally self-sufficient in the City of Warsaw as we have low-income in doing this study. I, and Dana from the Building Department, and Bill Baxter from the county have helped, because we have one day that I do all paper training with them, and they have to look at slides, and they, they get a little bored that day. Then, the next day, they go out with a trained inspector and, and a nurse. And we do a whole day of houses that way. So, Dana participated a few different days today and took the students out, and we learn from them, because we're not looking at the health part that they're looking at, so it's kind of interesting to put the two together. And so, by the end of this year, we will have a study that will be published nationally, and we will be the first rural community to have done this study. These have only been done in places like Detroit. And then, as far as how it goes, we will have a website in a month. I am trying to get current with the times. We've always done everything with paper, so, and it's looking very good. We also are starting a new partnership with SAWZ, which is an organization out of Indianapolis that has grown nationally now, that builds ramps. And their bylaws, they can only do 50% area medium income and under, and our bylaws say we can do up to 80%, which is right there on that cusp of middle class. And they have volunteer engineers and everything that engineer every ramp, and they've got it down to $1,000 for materials. So, we are getting groups of volunteers together and do builds, and we just did one with them in Silver Lake a week ago. So, that was kind of a new, fun experience, and that will save rehab money. And the other thing I And the other thing I thought I should tell you, that I thought was interesting when I put everything together, was our second biggest source of funds last year for HOW was the paybacks from people that have received our services in the revolving loan funds. That was 29% of the income that paid contractor payments. And I think that's about it.
Pam, where's that listed on your funding, past funding sources? Is it on there, or is that more in your reports?
That was in the annual budget.
So a question I've got here, community development block grant funding from my CDA kind of seems to be 122,000 in 2016, it was 52,000 in 2017, it's only 5,000 this year, and next year projecting it to be 100,000.
Yeah, because we didn't apply for a grant last year.
So I know in the past, when you've applied for a grant, you use some of the, some of this money from the city, in the past, you have.
When I do a city grant, but not if I do a county grant.
Okay.
Then I don't ask you for the money, because it goes to citizens outside of the city.
Gotcha. So that 100,000 next year will be for?
Is more county. And the city has, your fund, your revolving loan fund has close to 70,000 in it. And honestly, we haven't had that many requests for rehab within the city limits this year. You need to annex some more, because they're all like just right outside the city. They have Warsaw addresses, but they're county taxpayers. But that's been the majority of our asks this year. So we go by demand. I have to have so many people ready before you can apply for a grant, because you have to know how many people are in the household, and if they have children or don't have children, and you have to aim your grant either for over 55 or people with children. They don't mix anymore.
Anything else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Looks like Cabs are requesting a little bit more than last year, about $1,314. So, Randy, how are you?
First of all, thank you for your past support for Cabs, public transportation that serves all of Cosgasko County. Last year, we provided 55,000 rides across the county. About 30,000 of those are rides that either originate and/or both in the city of Warsaw. So around 60% every year is directly related to the city of Warsaw. We know that 2/3 of our passengers earn less than $10,000 a year, and that is why we need public transportation. It's working, it's helping people who might be elderly and no longer drive, people with different types of disabilities that also cannot drive. We also know that about 30,000 of the trips are for people that are going to and from their jobs every day, too. So the majority, again, are people that are employed, but for whatever reason, either they can't drive, or they cannot afford a vehicle. This is a federal-funded program. We also get state dollars, and it requires a local match. And so the city support is very important to helping us draw down those federal and state dollars to provide the transportation. Also included in our request this year is dollars for, that we applied to the match of a new bus. We have nine vehicles that we keep in operation. They have a useful life of about 150,000 miles, which we see in about three-year period of time. So we have a schedule, we're almost every year trying to replace one or two vehicles. So the money that, if you would provide the match to us, is 20% of the total cost of a vehicle. The rest of that comes from the federal funding that we receive. I'll keep it short.
Okay. So again, you're asking for the same amount as far as transportation operations as the 2018 request, which was $19,055. And then your local match for the bus is up slightly from last year. You're asking for $11,314 as opposed to $10,000 that was used last year.
Yeah, we get those vehicles through a state quantity purchase, so we're getting the best price on those.
Okay. Questions? All right. Thanks, Randy.
Yeah, and did you want me to do Head Start also?
Yeah, let me, yeah, that'd be fine. KEDCO is going to be considered in the edit budget. It's not coming out of council, has not been in the past. So we'll defer KEDCO request when we go through that budget. So we all, yeah, we can move to Head Start. This is a new request, as you're all familiar with. Randy, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Yes, this is a new request, and we've been providing Head Start, early Head Start in Cosgasko County for about 30 years now. We are licensed to serve 175 children, and so we cannot exceed that. We're always at full capacity. The school year that just ended, 121 of the children lived, have a Warsaw address. So again, the majority, about 2/3 of the kids, are Warsaw residents. This is also a federal-funded program, and it also has a local match requirement. And to date, we've been able to meet that through donations, as well as some in-kind. But if you look at the financial, you can see it's getting, it is getting tighter on the budget. People know that we are preparing these young kids for kindergarten. But what they often don't know about Head Start is it is a much more comprehensive program than that. We are required to provide the children both breakfast and lunch. It's a menu that is developed by a dietitian. We have a kitchen in place, and we prepare and provide those meals every single day that those kids are there. Family participation is required in Head Start. You're not just dropping off your kids. You are participating in coming in and working with the children. You have to go through instruction. And what we're really trying to do is prepare those parents to be advocates for their children when they do transition into kindergarten and into school. We are required to be sure that the children are getting their immunizations, that they have a health home, and a dental home also. At the Head Start program, we are doing hearing and vision screenings. We are also going into the family homes and doing lead screenings and looking for, you know, any incidence of that. And believe it or not, we still find lead in homes. We do other little things, like if a family cannot get to Riley's Hospital, we will transport our, that family and that child to Riley's Hospital. We, this program has a point system to be eligible for, but the common criteria is meeting the federal poverty guideline. So a family cannot exceed 100% of that, and that means a family of four cannot earn more than $25,100 a year. So these are kids that are living in a household that meets the definition of poverty. The 40%, or excuse me, 1/4 of the kids will be identified as having some sort of delay, and we usually find that out about October of every year. We follow the school year for the public school system, and we will begin performing assessments. And through the first couple of months, Head Start is usually, or oftentimes, the first entity that will diagnose that there is a delay in a child. And then we will go about working with that child and the family to get the services that they need. And so we have speech pathologists, occupational, physical therapists that are coming in and working with the child, working with the family. If we cannot meet the need, then we're also providing referrals to help the family also. And then one of the other things that we do is, because the families are living in usually pretty tough situations, every year we have some families that are living in their car, or they're bouncing around from week to week because they don't have a home. And so we work with those families to try to stabilize the family unit. Because what we know is, if mom and dad are worried about where they're putting their head down that night, or how to get gas to put in their car, they're not focusing on the welfare of their child. So Head Start is a preschool program, but it is much more than any standard preschool program in terms of what we are required to do.
You made a comment about your budget, how you're starting to, that gap is getting narrower and narrower. Can you just walk me through the budget? I assume you're just talking about before depreciation.
Yes.
Total revenue.
Yeah.
So for example, at the end of, just about a year ago, you had about 1.13 revenue, and your expenses were 1.075. So you're saying you were within?
Yeah, if.
50, 60, 55,000.
The capital stuff falls right to the bottom line, any kind of capital purchase that we have in the Head Start program.
So I guess the question, and then I'll ask it as a, what prompted the need to make a request for $10,000 on a budget of 1.7 million, 1.6? Just curious, why the new request of the city?
We're having, there's an expectation to show the broad community support for this program. So that is, that's part of what is driving it.
As part of your federal funding?
Yes.
That's a good answer.
What's that?
It's a good answer.
Randy, on the staff members that are listed now, are these some part-time volunteer, whatever?
No, that list, they're all employees.
They're all employees.
And the majority of them are full-time.
Full-time, okay.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Who do you have Head Start? Where is Head Start?
In the old Dido's building.
I'm sorry?
In the old Dido's building on South Buffalo Street.
Okay.
Yeah. So there, a lot of them are embedded in schools also.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Randy. David, Cosgasko County Senior Services, they're asking for $20,000, contract with them this year for $17,500.
Yes. Thank you very much for your support, past and present. And Joe, I want to commend the Parks Department on the great job that they do with us. We're forming a great partnership at the, at Lucerne Park. We're working with Sheila, and Stephanie, and of course Larry, and Sean, they're all just great. Anytime we have a problem with the building, they're on it. So I just want to thank you to start with that. We have three programs that your funding has helped with, and I'm going to focus more on transportation, but I'll do that at the end of my presentation. The first program is a home-delivered meals program. We, you're helping to fund part of the cost. We get about 48% of the meal cost paid by real services. The other 52% is paid either through a client contribution or with your funding. Most of that, some are, the clients generally cannot pay the full price, so they pay as little as a penny per meal, but they do pay something on the contribution side. Diane, you mentioned about, talking about the city of Warsaw, exactly what type of funding's happening. We now have what's called My Senior Center. I think about, I spoke about it last time, but that's going to be able to siphon off and divide out what citizens of Warsaw are funded for. It's a tracking system that the seniors come in, and they swipe the card, and they can do a touchscreen and say precisely what services that they do. That's helping all three of our programs with what it helps for. We do approximately, you're talking the city of Warsaw, I would say 60 meals a day for seniors in Warsaw. We do a total of maybe 90 a day that goes out throughout the county. But the majority are in the city of Warsaw. We have six routes that are in the city of Warsaw. I'd like to talk about the SAC also at this time, the Senior Activity Center. We serve over 3,200 meals at the Activity Center. We're a real-service nutritional site, so the seniors can come get a meal. Today, we serve 38 meals to senior citizens. When I started, we'd go around eight to 10 meals a day, so we've really increased that. We're doing things like, they're going to ride on the Dixie sometime later this month. We take the seniors to North Webster, and they go for a ride. Our studies, Dan Carey from the Bowen Center is our board president, he's a senior vice president of compliance with the specialty of geriatric mental health. These type of outings are so important for seniors to successfully age. We have to avoid the isolation of them staying in their house all day. That happens to some seniors. I talked to a lady just this week. I said, when's the last time you've been out of the house? She said, well, I can't remember. We'll come get you. Our transportation services will come get that senior and bring her to the SAC, so she can get the recreation and the socialization that's vital to successfully age. I want to spend more time on transportation. I know time is valuable here. Randy was talking about the, the transportation that they do. We currently have five buses. One is, actually four buses and a minivan. Before I started, we were having no turnover of the buses. You have to replenish the bus. I'm looking at our bus list right now. When I started, the newest bus was seven years old with over 100,000 miles. In the last three years, every year we've gotten a new bus. We've got now a 2016, a 2017 van, and a 2018 bus. We're turning them over. We've just been approved by NDOT for another bus for 2019. So that is so crucial. It cuts down on the cost of maintenance. It's a better ride for them, it's safer. You get to a point, if a bus gets too old, you can't even insure them. I want to talk about something else that affects Cabs. We have a partnership with Cabs there on the TAC Committee that you know about, Joe. We have a successful local TAC, now Transportation Advisory Committee. Cindy's a member of that committee. She gave an excellent, excellent presentation at the last meeting. But probably, if you're looking at page two, the biggest thing that stuck out to you is Medicaid transportation. Ron and Cindy are well aware of what's gone on with Medicaid. There's now a third-party provider that we have to bill Medicaid through. They first contacted me on April 12th of this year, and then they gave me a 40 to 45-page contract to sign what this, what this third-party provider is doing, all the billing of Medicaid. Cabs is what's called a 5311. We're a 5310 designation, designated from NDOT. So what they wanted to do is for us to transport all Medicaid patients regardless of age. This goes against our very mission statement. We are a senior services. The second page of our funding request, we say we're over 60. This third-party provider doesn't care about that. They want us to take all the patients. I can't in good conscience turn down a senior citizen for a ride to take a nonsenior citizen that happens to be a Medicaid patient. What our board has decided at this time is to put it on hold. We can always opt into this third-party provider at a later time. But right now, the rules and regulations that they're inflicting on us are very onerous, all the way to the point where our riders can't take a drink of water, or they can't eat on the bus. That's one of their rules. So we take a dialysis patient, and we pick him up, and after dialysis, he's gone through a grueling experience. He would always eat a power bar. According to the letter of the law of the contract, he can't eat that power bar. So at this time, you know, we got 16,675 last year. I'm projecting zero, because we are not going with this third-party provider. So you're asking me, how am I making that up? Well, when we get the new buses, we sell an old bus, that's part of it. I've written some grants for transportation to the foundation, that's another part of it. But I'm hoping that the 2,500 extra that I'm asking from the city can be another part of that 16,675 that we are losing on Medicaid billing. I could go on and on, and I know time constraints, but I could go on for half an hour on this easy, and I know I don't want to at this point in time. I know you don't want me to on this point. point in time. I know you don't want me to on this point in time. So if there's any questions about this, I'd be happy to take them. Ron, I sent Ron the contract. He looked at the contract.
It's my understanding you've reached out to people down in Indianapolis about this?
Yes, we have. And if you look, if you just Google search this company, their customer surveys are horrible. Ron's been a big asset on getting me in touch with some state officials to see if there's something that can be done about this. But we are at a, right now, we're not able to comply with what they want us to do and still serve senior citizens.
It seems like another layer of bureaucracy has been added.
The, the, the old way of billing Medicaid is, we would take a Medicaid patient, we'd pick them up. There's a form that they would fill out and sign. I, there was a Medicaid appointment. We picked them up. We got them there. We got them back. Easy peasy, no problem to bill. Now, it's, this is the contract. And also, they gave me a date to decide. I got this on, I got the contract on April 30th, and they wanted to sign, wanted me to sign it by, at the latest, May 14th. And I didn't have a board meeting scheduled in that time. I didn't have, I didn't have time to consider it. I'm not going to sign a contract like that till my attorney looks at it. It was very rushed, very rushed indeed.
I don't know if you've seen any of these Indianapolis airport cabs in Warsaw, but that's what this is. They are transporting people in the non-cab thing. Your vehicles that you acquire new?
Yes.
Make on, those are all federal, and you don't, do you have a...
The vehicles we acquire are 80% funded by NDOT, and we got 20% from K-21 for the local match.
Gotcha.
So that's how we funded those three new vehicles.
And K-21 pays your match? All right. Questions?
So I'm fighting a good fight on this. I don't know if I'll win. I probably won't. But, and I'm not, like I said, I'm not going to bore you with all the details, but there are a lot of details.
All right.
Thanks.
Very much. Nate. Nate comes forward. He's asking for $20,000 this year, and 2018 was, amount was, was $15,000.
Yeah, so thanks again for partnering with us on our work in 2018 in the city of Warsaw here. Just to remind you, the three lakes in Warsaw, Winona, Pike, and Center, those three lakes alone generate about $2.5 million in annual property taxes. The property values around those, those three lakes is about $300 million. So that's part of the service that we provide to residents in the city of Warsaw, is enhancing those property values through the work we do, and also the economic prosperity of our community. As a whole, the county generates about $313 million every year due to the lakes, and Warsaw's a big part of that. So what are some of these services, other than enhancing property values, immediate response to different events that come up? Remember, chemical spills? The mayor and I worked a lot on that, along with several departments within the city. We had three, three, three spills in 2015. We've had fish kills since then. We also are doing future planning for the residents. You'll recall that we worked on train derailment and planning on that this past year. Another service is health and safety of our residents. And so that would take the form of looking at E. coli at our public swimming beaches like we did a few years ago, and that's really moved the health of our community forward since that study and the actions that the city was able to take. We've been looking at blue-green algae toxins, and we've added in Pike and Center Lakes this year, due in part because Center Lake, you'll recall, last year turned red for several months because of algae. And during that testing time, we had some pretty high toxin levels. And we were just happy that those were not during the typical swimming season, but came right up to the edge of that. We also have been having a lot of educational opportunities for the residents here. The Lakes Festival, which is a great partnership with the city, a lot of K-12 programs too. Expert direction for residents would be another service that we provide with the expertise that we have. And then that's not just for residents, but it's also for departments of the city of Warsaw. We work a lot with Parks and Rec, as well as Stormwater. Those are probably the two we overlap with the best. And then the last thing that I'll mention for services would be projects that move the needle. And an example of this would be the Tibbit Canoe River Log Jam Removal Project, which we spearheaded. And we've heard from residents of Center and Pike Lake that, that, that has had an impact on flooding over the last few years. And, and another example would be the Byer Brady Trail, which was sort of a refresh of that trail system, where we worked with the city and others to complete that.
Questions? I know Nate, as I was looking through your funding sources, I was curious how Grace College fit in, but I did go back to your, your budget, and it showed their contributions to your organization in kind, so I filled that in. Nate has been a great partner for some of the issues that we faced. I'll leave it at that. All right. All right. Thanks, Nate.
Thanks.
Chris?
Hi.
Beaman Home is asking for $15,000 this year. Their amount was $5,000 in 2018, so...
Hello. For those of you who might not know, I am Tracy Hodson. I'm the executive director of Beaman. I've been there for nine years. And on July 17th, just a couple weeks ago, we actually celebrated having our new shelter open to full capacity. On July 17th of 2017, we opened up second floor on Parker Street, and we tripled our capacity from where we were on Detroit Street. We had 13 beds at that time. It was a single-family home, for those of you that might remember. And we were really only known as a shelter. When we opened up the new facility, we were able to triple bed capacity. We were able to also add to this amount of space for residential. But more importantly, we were able to add on an adjacent outreach center. So what we know from domestic violence and sexual assault victims is that when they come to us and they stay in our shelter at their moment of crisis, that is either just the beginning, or it's the middle of their journey from being a victim to a survivor. And what Beaman was doing for years, we've been here for 33 years, we've been doing really well at doing emergency shelter. What we had, we're struggling with for a long time was being able to have a continuum of services. From the moment that somebody realizes that this relationship I'm in is really unsafe, or it's unhealthy, or it's not what I thought it was going to be, to the moment that I was able to say, "You know what, Beaman? Thank you so much for what you've done, but I've got it." We wanted to be able to provide a continuum of services. And the new building over on Parker Street allows us to do that. So we do still very much do shelter. We're still very much that 24/7 care. If you need us at any time, there is somebody on the crisis line. There is somebody at the door, and we will make sure that you are safe, and it will take you in. But more importantly, we've been able to add on services that have been to help you go from that, "This is really a bad place for me to be," to "I'm a safe and self-sufficient individual." So what we were able to do over on Parker Street is we were able to add on outreach services. So now we have outreach advocates that will come to somebody in their neighborhood, and we'll sit with them, and we do safety planning, and we talk to them about their situation. We help them realize that they have options. And a lot of things that we do is really just listening. And to be able to provide that support and let them know that they're not alone, that this happens more frequently than we like to admit, and that the Beaman will be there for them. The outreach advocates are also with them after they've left Beaman Home. So they've left the shelter, or maybe they were able to find shelter on their own, so they have a supportive family member where they could be safe. And we're still providing case management services. We're still providing somebody to come and talk to them about what their options are. We're providing them referrals to hear, for services in the community, as well as outside of our community, to help their family stabilize, and to help them overcome the experiences they've had as a domestic violence victim. We've also added on a mental health component. So one of the biggest things for a domestic violence victim is, a lot of people assume that domestic violence is the violence, right? You immediately think of the black eyes. You immediately think of the broken bones. You immediately think of that physical violence. But domestic violence is so much more than that. It is the emotional abuse that somebody has to go through, somebody telling them how stupid they are, how they're never going to survive, how they're never going to make it without them. All of these things that tear them down from the inside. And while the bones heal and the bruises go away, that voice goes through their head every day, reminding them how stupid they are, and how they're never going to be worth anything. Our mental health counselor, I've been very excited, I'm very proud of her. She's been with our organization for 21 years. She has had every position in Beaman Home, including mine. She was the interim when I started. And she got her degree from Grace College, Masters of Counseling, in 2016, and she started our mental health component in-house. And there is nobody in this community that I would trust more with a traumatized family or domestic violence victim, and their mental health and their ability to overcome what they have than April. So that was a big piece of what we did over on Parker Street. We were able to add on life skills training. So a lot of the people that are coming through are young, or they don't have, they don't have the skills they need to be self-sufficient. Maybe somebody didn't allow them to be self-sufficient. Maybe somebody didn't allow them to be able to do things like understand budgeting and household management, and they didn't have that. And so what we were able to do is, we were able to add those programs. So now we have workshops and support groups and things that support somebody's development and education, and to be able to say, "I'm an independent adult, and I can make these decisions, and I can do this on my own." Our life skills classes include things like budgeting, and, you know, which is not fun. Nobody likes that one. But, it includes budgeting and household management. We're adding a track for becoming a good tenant, to understand what your rights and responsibilities are as a tenant, and to understand what the rights and responsibilities a landlord is, and to be able to have that good relationship, so that when you leave the shelter, when you leave and you're in a place of your own, you're not looking at eviction because you didn't follow the lease, or those type of things. And so trying to help them educate so that they are able to sustain and be able to stay on their own and independent, and not continuously get evicted, or to have problems with their landlord. Our support groups, we have three main ones that happen in the evenings. They are open to not only people who are staying in shelter, but the people that are staying in our community that are living on their own. Support group on Tuesday night is supper and support. It is a communal meal. It is for anybody that's enrolled in our programs. They come in, they eat a communal meal, and then the adults receive support group in our conference room, and then the children receive services in the children's room. On Wednesday evening, we do a Codependent Anonymous group, and on Thursdays, we do a therapeutic group called Beyond Trauma. All of these groups have increased in utilization, and I was doing some numbers and some calculating, and we have served, just opening up the shelter, from 2016 to 17, we were able to serve 33.5% more people moving into the shelter, and that was before we opened to full capacity. And so far, in the first six months, we have received, or served 147 unduplicated individuals, 76 adults, 71 kids, and we're on track to be able to serve over 300 by the time our year is over. Today, our census is actually in shelter. We have 11 women, nine children, and four men who are staying. So we have 24 right now, and we had two walk-ups, two walk-ins today, that were not part of that census. So we're starting to see utilization over on Parker Street that we never would have had over on Detroit Street. Our, we also were able to add on our children's program. So 50% of the people coming through our program every year are kids who have experienced domestic violence, and are who are entering our programs with their abused parent or guardian. These are children who have seen things in their home that they should never have seen. They shouldn't have seen it on TV, and they certainly shouldn't have seen it in real life. And so what we were able to do with the new program is, I have, we hired a former educator. She's a master-level educator and a former assistant principal. And she's put together a program that we not only do assessments to be able to figure out what trauma these children have witnessed, and what they've experienced, but we're also able to set up care plans that are specific to helping them overcome that. Her education background also allows us to work with our local schools. She is working with Warsaw Community Schools, Tippi Valley, and Wawa Sea, and we're providing prevention programming. There is, and forgive me, I should have brought Casey, because she'd be able to tell you, but there are new rules and regulations that have been passed by a legislation about social and emotional development and curriculum that's appropriate for schools to be able to use to meet that new legislation requirements. Casey, with her background, and with the fact that she's connected and works for Beaman, has been working diligently with our schools to make sure that they have the curriculum development that's appropriate for the legislation. And more important for us, that it's specific to preventing domestic violence in our community. The idea is to stop the cycle before it starts. And so I'm very excited about our children's program and what it's been able to do. We've also added on, or added to our resident, red, start that one over again. We've also been able to add funding for our rental assistance program. So when you come into the emergency shelter, you are considered homeless by HUD standards. It's category four. You are a homeless individual. We have rental assistance dollars from HUD, from IHCDAA, that allows us to be able to, for qualified individuals, it is income-based. And we get to do first-last-months rent, security deposits, help you negotiate with the landlord, get you in, and then we provide six to 12 months of limited rental assistance. And it's a tiered system, so maybe at the beginning, where, you know, you are a zero-income person, you have no income at all, and you're working towards finding a job or gaining access to resources, then we're paying 100% of your rent. And then in three or four months, we're going to tier that down, and now we're only going to pay 75%, 50%, until, at the end of the 12 months, you have, you have been able to absorb slowly the 100% of your rent, so that you are self-sufficient. Our entire goal is to make sure that we're helping you increase income, and that when you come off of our program, that you are permanently housed and stabilized there, always having access to all of the other services that Beaman provides. The shelter that you see over on Parker is beautiful. If you haven't been able to come over, I invite you to come see it. We do a brunch at Beaman on the third Thursday of every month. Come, have a tour, talk to us about our program, see what we do, because it's more than just a shelter, and the services we're providing are impacting lives every single day. And I thank you for the $5,000 that you provided this year, and I'm really hopeful for 2019.
Questions?
I see you have quite an increase coming up in your federal grants. Is that because of the larger shelter?
That's partly from the larger shelter. There's, and we're looking at new federal funds, because we have added some programs. So one of the things that you don't see in your application packet is the fact that we've actually organically grown a sexual assault victim, or sexual assault services, and recovery services for substance abuse. So I have two people on staff who have gone through specific certifications, and that's going to open up for us federal dollars that we can't, couldn't access this year, because as of 2019, we'll be able to access dollars that are specific to sexual assault services, and specific to peer recovery coaching, and some other sobriety support systems. The other part is also our kids program, because of being able to develop it the way we have, and because we have Casey, that allows us to actually access dollars in the federal level for kids programs that, prior to having her, we weren't able to.
Yeah, I had a similar question. I noticed, you know, Voka grant, a pretty big Voka grant, and federal grant funding is up. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Just wondering how that fits in the context of your increase asked for the city.
So, and just like Randy had mentioned, and everybody's mentioned, we are required by the federal government to have matching dollars, depending on which grant it is. If it's, we have an emergency solutions grant, which runs our shelter program, the operations, that's 100%. So dollar for dollar, I have to be able to match that with local contributions and support. Our Voka grant is a 25% match. Our rapid rehousing is a 25% match. And so the increase is really, for the same reason everybody else is. It's because we're being required to access local dollars to be able to match our federal dollars.
So it's another way the city can leverage local monies with those. And those, again, that's an understandable answer. Okay. Anybody else?
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Tracy. Appreciate it. All right. Andy McLeary, how are you? Andy's coming forward to make a request for the Warsaw Little League. It's a new request. They're asking for $5,000.
First of all, thank you. I want to thank Jeff and the street department for coming out and working on Freddie Boggs' drive. That was nice. They paved it for us. Looks a lot better out there, and we don't have to drive through a pond to get to the park now. So thank you, Mayor, for, for that help. Yeah, so I got a call back in February to help run the park, and I took, I took it on full throttle. We had three people, and... We had three people and $0, small amount of money. Today, we have 10 board members, and we got through the spring season, and we're really happy to start moving forward. But right now, we have a safety, a couple of safety issues we want to push forward with, and those are protecting our patrons. One, the overhead, the foul balls. Obviously, as you can picture, a hub with four diamonds, foul balls going everywhere, and the asphalt right now is chipping away. We believe it's maybe 25 years old, but everything is all, it's aged a little bit, is what I'm trying to say. So we're trying to take a step forward and improve our facilities, and safety is number one. I don't have a big speech for you, other than all of our volunteers, all of our board members, we're all volunteers, and we're trying to collaborate with the community right now. We're pulling in, of course, the Warsaw High School, their baseball program plays out there. So we're trying to improve the asphalt for, of course, many of the fans and opposing teams that come in the community for handicap accessibility reasons. We're trying to improve that part of the park first. We're collaborating with the K-2-1 Foundation and trying to pull in some funds for this project. This total project is gonna be around $60,000. So we're asking $5,000 from the city. It's, I believe, the first time our organization has asked the city for funds, so I appreciate the opportunity. Is there any questions for me?
Andy, I know the high school does use the facility out there for their C-Team games. Do they provide you any kind of funding for that?
Yes, sir. We get a $7,500, it's an agreement, is all it is. It's a handshake, and we provide a place for them to practice and play. It's JV as well. So it's JV, it's really a combination of a freshman group and a JV group that plays their games at our park. They do not have a JV baseball field at the high school.
Is that what I see under concession, $7,500, or is it mixed in with something else?
If it's under concession, that might be the food net amount that we're expecting to make.
Same dollar amount, that's why.
Same dollar amount, yes, sir.
And I was gonna ask, and perhaps this may be included in there, I'm seeing between '17 and '18, quite an increase in sponsorships and also advertising source, those, some new things?
That's right. A lot, when I took over, there was no, there was very little paper trail, there was no budgets, there was very little board minutes. So we've taken, we've started from ground zero, and we've put together some figures for you all that we believe are accurate, from, especially the sponsorship. We know we had some in '17, but we know we have a new sponsorship committee, and we're raising some more money that way as well.
So do you feel pretty comfortable in that maybe we'll continue on?
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. As a matter of fact, we have a fall league this year. We've introduced fall baseball, instead of leaving the parks empty for, after July on. So this is, every team will have a sponsor in that regards, yeah.
Mike, I did see in P&amp;L, it does show, Atlanta, $7,500 for rental.
It just didn't, it wasn't specific, it didn't say who it was from. I see it there.
So Andy, your request this year, it looks like it's for a specific project.
Specific, yeah, we're, the asphalt project and safety netting, but specifically the asphalt first. We've got to improve the walkway, especially for people with, and handicap folks or people with disabilities.
Would you anticipate this would be a multi-year need, this project?
Yeah, and we want to budget for that, start budgeting for that, so every second, third year, if we have to reseal, we will, as opposed to waiting. We don't want the people to take over, to take over from us to have to deal with this every 10, 20 years.
I guess, like, following up on the mayor's question, is this a one-time request to get you off of the ground, or are you expecting the council to continue to support Little League?
I'm sorry, thank you for that. Actually, I have about $300,000 in needs. The park, from my understanding, from my understanding, the park, it could be well over 50 years old. Maybe somebody else can help with the history there.
How old is it, Jerry?
I never played baseball.
Jerry could help us. We have wooden light poles that are very outdated. We have several things that are outdated, but the lights still turn on. So, yeah, to answer your question specifically, I'd love to put a couple more zeros behind that five, but, but yes, we would like to pursue year two, three, four, possibly, asking the city for some funds to help get us back to where we want the park to look for our community. Kids, obviously, they love the game regardless of what the parking lot, but us adults care, we do care a lot more about making it fit and the aesthetics of it for everybody involved.
How many players did you have this year, this spring?
Counting the high school kids and going, the fall, we will count the fall league. We already have about 200, 250 kids, so, and some of those are repeat, but at least 600, let's talk about the spring, at least 600 kids for the spring.
Signed up for the leagues?
Yeah, that's spring, some of the high school kids, and then we have another 250 coming back for the fall, and some of those kiddos are probably repeat, well, they are repeat kids. There's a few new ones from Bleesburg Mentone Leagues, yeah.
I know, Andy, when I talk to you, I know there's kind of a traveling team, it's a different sanctioning organization, BPA versus Little League. Do you have any collaboration with them, our facilities or games?
Yeah, actually, I've spoke with Carl at the CCAC, I've spoke with our attack program. The attack is the local traveling baseball league. There's different age divisions, of course, and I'm working with them right now as well to try to attain those kids into our, into our Little League. At one time, when it first started, it's a great youth program for kids, but we did lose some of those kids, and I've been trying to fight to get them back to play with their buddies. So, yeah, we're working towards that. And collaborating right now is huge for me. It's the first thing, taking over, you heard me say there was three people, and you gotta have people and money to run an organization. So building relationships for me has been the most important thing in the spring, moving forward, and speaking to the high school, the city, so on and so forth, K-2-1, the foundation, several organizations. We even spoke to the YMCA, because several organizations, we have overlapping services with youth baseball, T-ball. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to bring some of these folks together. And we're also chamber members as well, so we really want to make sure that we let the community know that we're serious about providing a nice place. It's one of the oldest that I know of. I think we're the oldest ball facility in the community that I'm aware of.
Anybody else? All right, Andy, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
All right, Rob, sorry you had to wait so long. Rob's coming up for a chamber ask. They'd asked for $18,000 in 2018, very slight increase of $18,360, and then the facade grant, they're asking for the same amount, $25,000 as last year, so I'm gonna start with WCDC.
Sure. So thank you so much for having me out here, and most importantly, thank you for your support, not only for WCDC but our community. You guys do a great job, and that probably doesn't say enough. Your roles are very difficult and challenging, and what you do is not applauded enough. So let me just be the first, or last, I guess, tonight to say thank you for all you've done. So WCDC, I won't go into it a lot, but as you guys know, it's here to further the economic development of the downtown business district through investments in people, buildings, land, and businesses. That's our role. So we are trying to promote our businesses, and we're trying to get people to come into the downtown to make sure we drive down the vacancies and improve the property values of our downtown businesses. That's the goal. And so through that, we take on projects. Last year, or the year before, we did the alleyway. We're looking into a new project that should be, I should be able to talk publicly about it very soon, just across the street over here. So thanks to always improve the downtown for the betterment of all of our citizens. Any other questions on WCDC?
Are there any vacancies downtown now, currently?
There's a couple, yeah. I mean, if you want to look at the Crown Over building, I wouldn't call that technically a vacancy, but there's no activity in it, so it looks like a vacancy. Across the street, you know, what used to be Greek Pizzeria, that is gonna be filled here very soon. So there's a couple, and then there's, you know, right next to Crown Over, there's a couple there that could have some retail openings very soon, and there's a couple other on some side streets that have possibilities. But overall, very low vacancies for retail space in the downtown.
How about the facade grant?
That's next. We can go into it now if you want to, but that's next, and I've got some cool stuff to show. Any other questions on WCDC specifically, or?
How many of the businesses downtown belong to, percentage-wise or whatever?
It's close to about, I'd have to pull, but I think it's, the last time I looked, it's about 70, 65 to 70%, somewhere in that range.
Okay.
So most of the businesses in the downtown contribute to WCDC. All right, so on the facade grant specifically, I don't do this enough, but I thought I would hand this out for all of you to see what the facade grant has done to improve the investments in our downtown. And, we're humble hooiers, and we don't always brag about what it's done, but through your investment through the facade grant, you can see from 2003 to 2018, WCDC received or input 3,000, almost $310,000 into facade grants, and that totaled almost $1.5 million in total investments in the downtown, which obviously improves property value and makes our downtown a better place to visit and to do business in. Again, thank you so much for your vision and dedication to the downtown for them. Appreciate it.
And I'll just add that, you know, this was the, one of the tenants of the Hyde-Palm study that WCDC quickly picked up and obviously has done a marvelous job with the importance of that facade grant program, as well as some other economic incentives for downtown businesses. But WCDC, that study was done in 2002, and here we started in 2003, and I've come forward 15 years.
Yeah, some of the early years between 3 and 12, we didn't capture the total investment that the businesses made, so it's probably honestly higher than this, but I, because we gave some $5,000, and we know it was 10, but they probably spent more than 10, and we just didn't capture it. But going forward from 13 on, everything has been captured, so we know that at minimum it's $1.5 million in improvements. So, Mike, any other questions on that?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What happens to the money when it's not spent?
Well...
It goes back into the jail.
Okay.
So that's, I mean, that's the beautiful thing.
So you just directly bill us, and then we bill that, we don't give?
Nope.
Okay, got it.
Nope.
Rob, thanks for that, that's thoughtful.
My pleasure, yep.
Appreciate that.
So you guys could put in the paper that there's some money available this year.
I think we've talked, Dan and I have, yes. We've had a conversation about that, that we want to get some more people, and there will be, my prediction is there's gonna be some movement across the street yet this year, so I think we all know that, so hopefully they'll come to us for some money for their improvements.
All right, cool, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, well, thank you all for your patience. I know it was a long meeting here, but I think there were some good questions, and I appreciate you all showing up and taking time. I know you all have your challenges. I know that funding is a constant issue, and again, those partnerships, showing local support, I know how important that is. When we go out and look for collaborative matches, it works both ways, and I think the council here understands the importance of that, just a matter of how that fits into our budget, and we'll certainly have some time to make consideration of all these requests. And if any of the council members have any questions of you all, certainly, they may be calling on you to maybe discuss a program or a concern, but again, I appreciate all the hard work you do. I know it's tough to come and continually ask for money, but unfortunately, I guess that's kind of the way things go with our safety net, and we're certainly here to do what we can, so thank you very much. Anybody else? Got anything? I just want to publicly thank the Parks Department for the work they did Saturday with the pro-wakeboard competition. It was an amazing event that kind of all of a sudden just happened and was really well-received and it really made the park look, it highlighted the park, let's just put it that way, so it was really nice, so. Any member, any members of the audience have any visitors' comments or questions? All right, I think it's, it sounds like it's getting ready to rain, so maybe you guys may have already started.
We have flights.
So is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes, move.
I might not have electricity in a few minutes, it's blinking away.
You guys have live sign, so please stay seated and pay attention to what you're saying.
I'm gonna have to do it. Oops. I wrote a not a grant for the Yacht High.
Did you lose some lights out here?
I remember thinking Andy could give some of that.
Well, I think so too.
Grant money for...
You know, and there was, there's another one I was thinking tonight, that there are grants available.
Yeah, I can't remember now where all my other grants too, but it's a considerable amount.
That was clean.
I didn't either, Jerry.
No, Jeff, would you hit the?